I'd like to call the October 13th, 2015 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Christensen.
Physically.
Finley.
Present.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or on, at the final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. So now we have our September 29th minutes to approve. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we pass the minutes of September 29th.
All right, I'll second that. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
No, Mayor Coombs, we do not have any revisions.
It's a report from the city manager.
No report, Mayor, council.
All right. So now we have a proclamation designating October 19th through 25th as Colorado Cities and Towns Week in Longmont, Colorado. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. It's proclamation designating October 19th through 25th, 2015, as Colorado Cities and Towns Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to the resident and the one with the most direct daily impact on residents' lives, and whereas the first ever Colorado Cities and Towns Week was celebrated in 2014 and was established to recognize the essential role that municipal government plays in our lives, and whereas municipal government is truly government for and by the people, and those people are our neighbors, friends, business owners, and community leaders, and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week provides an opportunity to convey to residents that our civic involvement shapes and influences their community, and we urge Longmont residents to participate in their city government, and whereas Longmont City and Towns Week is a time to recognize the important role played by municipal government in our lives. Now therefore, I Dennis Alcooms, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 19th through the 25th, 2015, as 2015 Colorado Cities and Towns Week in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to learn about and participate in their local government by volunteering for boards or commissions, providing input to local officials through public forum opportunities, visiting with local elected officials about topics of interest to you, or just stopping by a city facility for a tour. So I'm not sure if there's anybody that needs to... Okay. Should we all come up front, or...? All right.
Are we still teaching Polly?
She's writing notes.
You should be in little, you tall guys in the middle.
In the back?
In the middle.
You guys can stay in the front.
Okay, now it's time for public invited to be heard, and the first person on the list is Mark Aziz.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. Today, I would like to introduce the 2015 to 2016 Youth Council and present a video summarizing what Youth Council is. My name is Mark Aziz, and I go to Silver Creek High School.
My name is Katie Leon. I am currently a freshman at Alexander Dawson.
Good evening, my name is Karina Orana, and I am a 10th grader at Skalen High School.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Slama. I'm in the 11th grade at Silver Creek High School.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Andrew Zoo, and I'm a senior at Niwot High School.
Good evening, my name is Rohan Baysha, and I'm a senior at Niwot High School.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Robles. I've been in Youth Council for two years, and I've returned this year as Youth Council advisor.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council members. My name is Olga Bermeles, and I work for the city of Longmont at Children, Youth, and Families. And tonight, I'm here with some of the new members from the Youth Council, and we have a video that we, we kind of worked on this video last year, so let's see if we can have the whole video with the sound.
Like most teens, it's better silent.
Talking like a dad with a teenager.
I'm Danny's dad, by the way.
Okay, it was working a minute ago when we tried, but I'll turn it back off and I'll...
Just lost the youth.
We'll send it to you, but, Mark, do you want to summarize a little bit the video?
Yeah.
Did you already have it queued up?
Yeah.
Sometimes it loses its sound when it keeps up.
It turned off and on.
Can you hear the background?
Yeah. This video is kind of about projects that we've worked on last year, and the video is from last year, so here it shows us working on some ideas for what to do about vandalism in Longmont and trying to decrease acts of vandalism in Longmont. And it also shows us doing the Halloween for the Hungry project, in which we raise cans of food for the homeless. And what we did last year for the vandalism is we developed a contest for videos that advise Longmont residents and youth not to vandalize and advise them, or inform them of the consequences of vandalism for youth. And it also shows us doing another project, which is called Project Sticker Shock, and in that we just, so we put stickers on local liquor stores informing the public of the laws concerning providing alcohol to minors. And so here is Olga and a member from last year when they were trick-or-treating for Halloween for the Hungry. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. Over there, you can see what we did Halloween for the Hungry for the past couple of years, and what it is, is we go around and collect canned foods, which we donate to the Community Food Share to help them achieve their goal of making sure nobody in our community goes hungry. Last year, City Council won the challenge against the Longmont Youth Council.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a second.
I was saying that this year, Youth Council was going to win the challenge against City Council, and we hope to surpass or meet the goal that we had last year, 375 pounds, which we collected, which is an impressive amount. And there, on that note, we would like to award you guys the trophy from last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just going to keep it here this year, again. So is it based on pounds, or is it based on cans? What are we going with this year?
Pounds.
I'm a big guy, so I can... We look forward to keeping that trophy here, since I issued the challenge two weeks ago.
Okay, the next person on the list is Robert Gibbons, Fitzgibbons, excuse me.
Good evening. My name's Robert Fitzgibbons, practicing orthopedic surgeon in Longmont for 20 years, 22 years. Raised my kids here, moved here from Chicago, not a native, but I've enjoyed our time here and have invested a lot of time and effort into this community, specifically Longmont United Hospital. There is absolutely no need for another hospital in Longmont. The reason I'm standing up here, anyone that suggests that quality is an issue, we need a new hospital, I totally disagree, and I think it's nonsense. We have a fantastic hospital, Longmont United Hospital. Yes, it's a community hospital, but it provides great care and a large employment base for the city, as we all know. There presently are seven hospitals within, where I'm standing right now, there's seven hospitals within 20 miles of here. It's just crazy, it's mind-boggling. Until this was brought up about a new hospital, I never actually counted them, but there are. We've got five hospitals. This would be the UC Health Hospital, would be the fifth hospital in Boulder County. I could literally get on my bike, ride off, find hospitals, probably starting in the morning, get it done by nightfall. I'd be tired, but it'd be good for me. It's a healthy, healthy activity. When I moved here 22 years ago, part of the reason I came to Longmont was the community. Part of it was to take two competing orthopedic groups and bring them together, to work together. And ultimately, that's become Front Range Orthopedics, a practice in Longmont of eight orthopedic surgeons and obviously many other employees. Longmont Clinic, we helped support them. As far as call coverage, Longmont Clinic only had one or two orthopedic doctors, and orthopedics is a seven-day, 24-hour type of job. We, on our own, provided backup coverage and worked as a community because we wanted to support the local medical community. We gave them orthopedic coverage so that they wouldn't have to be on every other day, because sometimes Longmont Clinic only had one orthopedic surgeon. We had a meeting a few months ago with the UC Health people, the person they hired from Pittsburgh, the person that's brought in here to kind of take over the Denver northern Colorado area, in my eyes, the hired gun. I had a meeting with her and said we'd be happy to provide the orthopedic coverage to their new program when they took over the Longmont Clinic. We were told in pretty straight English that we're either with them, or they're against us. Either join on with UC Health, or you're the enemy, and their goal is to put Longmont United Hospital out of business. We obviously decided to stay and support Longmont United Hospital, and I'm here today because I don't think UC Health is good for the, is that my time?
Yeah, that's...
I don't think UC Health is good for the health of the community, and I'd hope that all members here could see that it's not good for Longmont.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eugene.
Mayor, council, Eugene May, City Attorney. I would repeat my admonition from last week. The UC Health Planning and Zoning Commission decision has been appealed. Council will be acting in a quasi-judicial capacity in order to protect the due process rights of the applicant and the public. I would advise you to disregard comments here and just make your decision on that appeal matter based upon the evidence presented at that hearing.
Okay. Ma and Ark.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Santos. I'll try to get your names all together at some point.
Can you pull the mic up?
No. At some point, I'll get your names. This is my tradition. Please give me some five minutes. Because I have an appeal. Precious appeal. We deserve a lot as people. I know the name of Councilmember Moore. I know my friend Sarah. We can do better. Look at the sky. Look at the sky, and you will see, you will see life. I'm appealing tremendously. And this is serious. We cannot do a double deal between believing in God and do something else. I'm serious.
Yeah, well, your three minutes are now up, Mo, so I thank you for coming.
I'm always happy to be here. This shirt came from Michael Butler, chief of the police. He's been my, 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 my friend for, since 2003. He gave me boxes. He's tall, tall as much as me.
Yeah, he's a great man. I...
And so...
I guess I'll ask you now to please sit down. You've had your three and a half minutes, so thank you.
God bless.
Thank you. James Johnson. Might want to pull the mic down because it's pretty tall.
I'm a little bit shorter than him.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and member of the council. My name is James Johnston. I live at 619 Kimbark, which is going to be sold, and they're trying to move me out, and I can't find a place to live. I have tried several different entities here to get help. I've lived here for 65 years. I've volunteered for over 30 years at the hospital, at the police department, and several boards, Longmont Housing Board, and things like that. And then when my health went bad and I couldn't work, my social security, my disability will not cover rent. And so we're going to be on the streets soon, because he called us this week and said he's going to show the house to some people, and that will give us just a short time to get out. We've been packed up since May with a bunch of stuff. We've got a storage unit that we pay $110 a month for that takes off the money for rent, but there's nothing we can do about that. But we need help from somewhere, and I don't know where we're going to get it, because otherwise, we'll be on the street sleeping in our car or whatever. And I think that I've supported the council and I've supported the city for years, and I think that maybe they could find something to do to help us out. And so I would appeal to you to help us in some way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Georgetta Johnson.
I'm Georgetta Johnston, and I live at 619 Kimbark. And good evening, Mayor and council. It's nice seeing you again. As he, as he said, the landlord called... As he said, the landlord called and said that he's going to show our house, and we've looked at lots and lots of places. And he had to retire before 25 years, 18 years ago, because of having cancer from the post office. And he was on lots of boards and different things, and I have also been a volunteer, plus held lots of jobs, including the schools. So I really feel like somewhere, somehow, with the government and what the city takes in, it should be able to help people like us. We've got money that we can pay. It's just not a lot. So there's got to be a way. And we're praying for you all because there's... The homeless, this is not a good thing. When you get older and you're facing this, it's interesting. It can happen to anybody. So somewhere, there's got to be an answer. And it's not like we haven't looked and checked with real estate and different places. So it's not like we're sitting there and expecting everything to be on a silver platter like different ones are. So, you know, I'm sure some way, somehow, if everybody gets to working together, you know, it's not a good thing. And like the homeless, I also feel like that they ought to be able to get a homeless to help some of the homeless people here like they have in Boulder that are, you know, having kids and having problems. But like, we're more the senior, and we're not ready to sit in our rocking chair. So thank you for letting me talk, and I'm sure that some way, somehow, something can be worked out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Georgetta.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Dr. Kenneth Kavanaugh, 2210 Riviera Place, Longmont, Colorado. I come here this evening as a concerned citizen for our Longmont community to speak about the UC Health proposal to build a second hospital in Longmont. My family and I came to Longmont in 1970, and I established my orthopedic practice not knowing anyone in Longmont. I was a founder of the present Front Range Orthopedic and Spine Center. Seven years ago, I retired. I continue to volunteer at the Longmont Salute Clinic, seeing only orthopedic patients. Presently, I have no financial interest in any Longmont medical group. Looking back to 1970, 45 years ago, there was fierce competition between Longmont Clinic and the non-clinic doctors. Eventually, out of concern for the quality of the medical care in the community, the doctors got together and combined the Longmont Community Hospital and the Longmont Osteopathic Hospital, merged it to become the present Longmont United Hospital, a state-of-the-art medical facility of which we are all proud. In 1970 and through to 1990s, physicians had some say in the practice of medicine. They could be true patient advocates. Now, medicine is largely controlled by insurance companies and large hospital systems such as UC Health. Presently, Longmont Clinic doctors are employees of UC Health. If a second hospital is built, clinic doctors will never send a patient to Longmont Hospital. It will become we versus them situation again. UC Health is splitting our Longmont medical community. Do we really want this? Longmont United Hospital has less than 50% capacity for the past several years. Our Longmont community has no need for more hospital beds. Most procedures are done as an outpatient basis now, and this is going to continue to increase in the future. Longmont already has a state-of-the-art hospital facility. We do not need a second hospital to only provide duplicate care. In my opinion, if the second hospital is allowed to be built, Longmont Hospital will eventually close. UC Health is not concerned about the people of Longmont. For them, it is all power and the control of medicine along the front range. The citizens of Longmont should be deciding whether they want or need another hospital. UC Health should not be dictating to us. Two hospitals in Longmont will drive with the cost of medical care. Longmont citizens will suffer medically and financially. I urge you not to let this happen. Thank you very much.
How you doing, Mayor, City Council? It's Michelle Maybe for the record. I just wanted to thank you guys tonight for last week's council meeting when here in chambers you all unanimously voted to take another look at the CIP and see where you might be able to find funds to allocate for Quiet Zones in Longmont. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. I moved here from San Diego to Longmont two years ago. I bought a 108-year-old home on Baker Street from a family that had lived there for 62 years. Because I wasn't familiar with Longmont, I was unaware of the negative stigma that the East Side held. Didn't take long for me to get the picture. Still, I saw the charm of the East Side, got to know my neighbors, and decided to take the plunge and invest a sizable amount of money to restore the gem that is now my home. "You belong in Longmont," the banner hanging all over Main Street, spoke to me, and I said, "You know what? I do belong here, and I've invested everything I have to better my neighborhood." I also believe in you, our elected officials, and it was so pleasing to sit here and watch you last week without unanimous vote. So other than myself, my neighbors are also improving their properties. It makes me happy these improvements mean tax revenue the city will see due to the increased property values in our historic East Side. So I want to applaud you for your attention to Quiet Zones. I think it's a great investment that will improve the lives of everyone in Longmont. So thank you publicly. I wanted to say thanks.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Councilmen and women. My name is Danny Wade, resident of 1609 Moonlight Drive, Longmont, Colorado. I've spoken with you all before regarding this topic. On September 23rd, University of Colorado Health presented a beautiful plan for their proposed hospital on Highway 119 and County Line Road. I understand that there was an appeal submitted to the council, and I understand that this is being reviewed at this time. While you are considering the zoning issues and the proposals, proposed modifications that UC Health has asked, please consider the following and perhaps more important factors that have the power to negatively affect and impact every individual in our community. First is dilution of care. I brought this topic up the last time I spoke here. The more inpatient facilities that are built creates less exposure to healthcare providers in order for them to challenge their own skill level, for them to be competent practitioners. For example, if you have an emergency team, emergency room team that deals with 1,000 patients a month, and you build another hospital in town, the dilution is... The math is easy here. You see 50% dilution going to each one of those hospitals. The comment has been made previously that people can make a choice while not in an emergent situation. That choice is being made for them. And during those times, we need to be sure that we're providing competent care wherever those patients are being brought. The busier these departments are, generally speaking, the more accustomed these people become at recognizing illness and becoming better to intervene. I understand that there's a feeling that this isn't necessarily the job of the council, but it is a city issue, and there are many community members who are concerned. Despite the regional growth that we see in our area, the current hospitals are all collectively running at about 50% capacity, leaving more than enough room for the projected growth that UC Health reported expecting by 2020. In addition to this, we need to consider the direction that healthcare is moving in the coming years, back to the outpatient side and away from the inpatient beds. Just doesn't make sense to allow another hospital to be built. It's been mentioned before that charity care is something significant that UC Health prides themselves in. I encourage council members to research the types of charity care that are being done and where that charity care is being delivered. Historically, it is extremely difficult to get charity care done by specialists, and this will continue with the model that they have proposed. Salute Clinic devotes all of its time to the lower socioeconomic folks in this community, and those patients will be treated at Longmont United Hospital. So as we move forward, I hope that you guys will consider these, along with the zoning issues and proposed modifications that UC Health has asked of you, and consider the things that I've mentioned today when you guys are making your decisions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. I live at 2148 Stewart Street, and I want to speak about RTD. I was on the Transportation Advisory Board for about seven years. Councilmember Santos was our council representative on there. And I saw the article in the paper recently, which has prompted me to come down here. It was in September. I found the email. September 2008, I made a proposal to TAB that I think at the time, if we had aggressively pursued that outline, Longmont would be in much better shape with RTD right now. At the time, we could have gone forward with this in a position of strength. We're now in a position of weakness, but I have some ideas that we could turn that into a position of strength. Also, that'll be... It would be a bit more difficult to follow through. Only have three minutes here, and I'm going to be able to tell you everything on it, but I will try to give you the briefest of outlines. But Nick Wolf from Gabe, other people here should have my email address. If you guys are interested, I would be happy to get together with it. So in 2008, September 2008, what I suggested to TAB was that we should go forward and go to RTD and tell you, "You know what? It's fine. Don't bring a train to Longmont. You can scratch it off your schedule. You can put us at the very end of the list, at least for the time being. We don't want you to remove us completely because if you ever do get the funds, we want the train. But for the time being, you can ignore us, and that's fine. But what we want instead is bus service right now." And I think if we had gone with something like that, it would have worked. At that time, RTD was still telling us that, "Oh, you know, we're going to have it built in five years," or whatever it was, which was garbage. The train wasn't going to get built then. It's not going to get built now. I mean, I see this article in the paper, and some of you and other candidates and such are still thinking that this train is going to happen. It's like, wake up, smell a coffee. The train is not coming. It is too expensive. And I think the only chance we have is to let RTD off the hook somewhat, somehow, by offering them something. But we want something back. And like I said, I have some ideas that we can maybe put us back into a small position of strength, but we're in a really weak position right now. We should have done something years ago, and we didn't. And we're hurting for it now. We're paying a lot of money for little service, and I'll just leave it at that. If any of you are interested, just please get in touch with Nick or whoever. And like I said, I've got some ideas, and I think it could still work, but we would see. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends first call. Public invited to be heard.
Mayor Coombs, your first item under ordinances on second reading public hearing is Ordinance 2015-47, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. There is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, is there any questions from council before I open it up for the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-47. Anybody from the public want to speak on that ordinance? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-47. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2015-47.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is Ordinance 2015-48, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapters 14.04 and 14.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding billing and maintenance of water and sewer service at Vance Ram Municipal Airport. Barbara Green is here to make a short presentation as soon as she gets her presentation up.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. This is very brief. One slide. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what this code is actually doing. In the mid-'90s, there was very limited water and sewer service at the airport, and we put in some water and sewer infrastructure in order to allow there to be fire protection at the airport as well as sewer service. And as part of that process, we established that master meters could be placed at the airport where people that were only going to have, for instance, one bathroom and a hangar, they wouldn't have to pay the full cost of a meter so that they could group together and pay less in system development fees, and it would allow them to get onto service. And so that code revision happened in 1996, and what it established was the master meter concept with the sub-meter billing being done by the airport manager. That's been in place for a very long time, and it's time to change. In order to get... Be more efficient at billing those folks at the airport, we want the sub-meters now to be read by the folks that actually do that all every day and get billed through the utility billing staff. And so that's essentially what this code is doing tonight.
Councilmember Christensen.
I want to thank you for taking a look at this, reexamining it, and making this change, which is... Seems to me a much more efficient way to do things, and thank you for looking at it.
Okay, I'm going to open up this, the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-48. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move Ordinance 2015-48.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to seconded. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is Ordinance 2015-49, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Cooster Property, the Smith Property, and the Mountain Shores Property to Jim Wilde. There is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-49. Anybody from the public want to speak on this ordinance? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-49. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move passage of Ordinance 2015-49.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Item 8D is Ordinance 2050, a bill for an ordinance amending the Johnson's Corner Building at 1117 Neon Forest Circle, local historic landmark designation.
Okay, is there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? All right, I'm going to open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-50. Anybody from the public want to speak on this ordinance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-50. Councilmember Christensen.
I personally think this is a very good idea. I hope this will allow Mr. Wallace to finish that bathroom over there.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of Ordinance 2015-50.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Item 8E is Ordinance 2015-51, a bill for an ordinance designating the Lavredson House at 408 Fourth Avenue as a local historic landmark. No staff presentation on this one either.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-51. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on Ordinance 2015-51. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Ordinance 2015-51.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded. Okay, passes seven to zero.
Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Item 9A, are your budget ordinances... Ordinance 2015-52, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the City of Longmont for the year 2015 to pay budgeted city expenses for the 2016 fiscal year. Item... Same item. Ordinance 2015-53 is a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development District for the year 2015 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2016 fiscal year. Ordinance 2015-54 is a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Longmont for the year 2016. Ordinance 2015-55 is a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016. All of these ordinances are scheduled for second reading on October 27th. All of these ordinances are scheduled for second reading on October 27th. Item 9B is ordinance 2015-56, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the Town of Lyons contract to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of the city's North and South Water Treatment Plant properties to the Town of Lyons. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for October 27th. Item 9C is resolution 2015-73, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and history Colorado for grant funding for a National Register nomination for the listing, the downtown Longmont Historic District on the National Register. Item 9D is resolution 2015-74, approving the amendments to the co-location license agreement and fiber use license agreement between the city and Eagle Net. Item 9E is resolution 2015-75, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for a permanent supportive housing study. Item 9F is resolution 2015-76, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the St. Green Valley School District RE1J for a joint use agreement. Item 9G is resolution 2015-77, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the Downtown Streetscape Project. Item 9H is resolution 2015-78, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado for a state aviation grant for the design and bidding of an airfield pavement rehabilitation project at the Vance Brand Municipal Airport. Item 9I is resolution 2015-79, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for a confirmation of easement agreement. Item 9J is approve the Gateway Business Improvement District 2016 operating plan and budget. And item 9K is appoint members to the Longmont Youth Council for the school year 2015-16. And staff would like to pull item A, which are the budget ordinances, and item B for short presentations.
B or B.
A and B as envoy.
Thank you. Councilmember Levison.
I'd like to move the consent agenda minus items A and B as envoy.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
And I believe Teresa?
No, actually, I'll jump in. Mayor, council, there is a couple of CIP components that staff wanted to talk to you about, so I'll turn it over to Dale.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Rattamaker, General Manager, Public Works and Natural Resources. So we have three CIP projects that we are sharing with you tonight that are being amended. One of them was at your desk tonight, the other two were in your packet. Those three projects are T-94, the Quiet Zones Project, T-127, the First and Emery Project, and then MUW-172. And Nick Wolf from Engineering Services will talk just real briefly about T-94 and T-127. Actually, I'll save him the time on T-127. The only change being made to 127 is to show in the text that 50% or half of the money, $500,000, is coming from the developer. So Nick wants to talk just real briefly about the changes we made to T-94, and then I'll have Ken Houston talk about MUW-172.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Nick Wolf from Engineering Services. I tried to do a couple of things with this CIP based on the discussions that we've had with council and the community last week. I tried to separate these things into three different areas. We have the railroad crossings, which are included in the FastTrax proposal, which would be funded by that. And Assistant City Manager Sean told us last week that they're still looking at the possibility of doing some of that work early. I broke out the First and Emery Crossing, and that left the 11 crossings from Main, Third, Fourth, up through 66, absent that First and Emery Crossing that would remain there. So I reduced the overall cost of the project only to reflect those. And that comes out to four and a half million. As I say in the text, it will range between 3.7 million and four and a half million, depending upon which option is chosen. One of the options, and they brought that up when the neighborhood was here last week, was the option, which was included originally in our study, of closing Fourth and Sixth Streets to avoid the costs of those. That would bring that total of those 11 down to 3.7. I also eliminated the phasing. It seemed to me that that was causing some confusion about whether we were setting priorities. When we originally did that, we were just saying, here's some potential groupings. I stated in the communicate area in the description of the project that it could be phased and most likely would be phased, and that that would require community involvement and discussions with the council. And I believe that for the direction of city council, if we do an update of those costs and bring that back, then that could be relooked at at that point in time.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Nick, thank you for going back and rewording those, so they're not... Having been here for several years, I understand how the CIP language is written, but for those that aren't used to it, it can be a little confusing. So just a thank you again for going back and redoing that.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank you, Nick. I think that eliminating the phasing leaves things more open. And I wouldn't say it was confusing. What was confusing is that when you compared the CIP with what was just given to TAB, it was like so different that it was not understandable, because, you know, TAB had new information that was not reflected in the CIP. I'm hoping that, of course, you're going to take this to TAB, you know, when the study's done first, before you come to council. And I think it's going to be very interesting to see if there might even be some new techniques to use to create some quiet zones. And I know that the neighborhood, as you saw tonight, I think people came and said thank you, because they've seen the work that was done. And I also think that it's a great thing to really reflect the developer input, because it did look like the whole million was coming from the street fund, and then the numbers weren't going to match up. So we're looking forward to getting some work started on these projects. And then I guess I have one question. Why do you show at year one is all four and a half million?
Because once again, I eliminated phasing. So eliminating phasing, we just simply showed all of the cost of those, the high end of the cost of those remaining 11 crossings. And that could be broken down, however council so ever decided.
Yep, that's clear. And I also want to thank council for allowing the amendment of these two CIPs to reflect what is really the current information.
I don't know if it's just good karma, but right after our big meeting last week, I got a phone call from Senator Michael Bennett's aide, and they were convening a meeting out in Fort Collins. They had all three railroad companies out there. They had representatives from the Railroad Safety Group. They had the Fort Collins people, Windsor people, talked about all kinds of different options. I guess Fort Collins is working on some sort of reduced standards. But anyway, it was, I don't know how much we got solved, but at least everybody was at the table. So, you know, this is a nationwide, you know, it's a Colorado problem. It's a nationwide problem. And one thing that I wasn't aware of is that at our higher elevation, that sound travels further and louder than at lower elevations, too. So, you know, the one-size-fit-all for Colorado, you know, I guess isn't a good model. But anyway, I just wanted to thank Senator Michael Bennett and the people from Fort Collins for hosting that meeting. And it's the first time I've ever seen, you know, three railroad and everybody at the meeting. So it was pretty exciting. So, Councilmember Santos, oh, okay.
Councilmember.
Okay.
Good evening, councilmembers. Ken Houston, Water Resources Manager. We also included on your desk tonight a revised CIP sheet for the Windy Gap Firming Project. This sheet actually doesn't change anything in the 2016 budget, so the budget that you're approving will remain the same. What we did, though, was to include a more recent cost estimate for the project. When we originally put the CIP together last spring, we were using the latest information from 2014 that we had. Over the course of the summer, the project participants hired a firm out of Montana that specializes in construction cost estimating for large construction projects, and completed, and we just received it in August, an updated cost estimate. We felt at this time it was probably good to at least get that on the table, so that as we look forward, we'll have a better idea of what that cost estimate means for our budget. One caveat, though, it's not the actual final approved project yet. We actually still need to go in and do one more thing, and that's have a cost escalation for time of construction. These costs are based on 2015 prices, and we all know that it will be about three years before we actually start construction. And so at that, this, over the course of the next few months, we'll get those estimates in as well, and forward that information on. What we did in this amendment, we kept the actual costs in the water operations section fairly static. That's kind of the funding that that fund can go forward with right now. We did increase the water construction amount. Historically, over the last 15 years as we've been working on this project, we've been funding those at equal 50/50%. But with a little more construction lately, we're able to fit a little more money into that water construction fund. We also slightly increased the funding coming from the water acquisition. That's, as we all know it, is our cash-in-lou fee and our cash-in-lou. We have received some cash-in-lou in the last year or two. It's allowed us to program a little bit more in that funding as well. So hopefully, we're getting zeroing in a lot closer. This, again, is based upon the 6,000 acre feet that we've been putting in the CIP. When we actually determine a participation level late this year, early next year, we'll adjust the numbers to the actual participation level that council directs us to do. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on either the project or the cost estimates you might have.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I see out there, get out there a little ways, we're starting to put in about 25% of our revenues into debt service. Can you explain what that's about?
Councilmember Moore, I assume you're looking at the Water Operating Fund?
I am.
Correct. So that's the debt load that the Water Operating Fund will be carrying. Your Storms River Fund is carrying a higher percentage, as is the Sanitary Fund. I think if you reach much above this, then I think you should be concerned. But I think in the 20%, 25%, 30%, I don't get too concerned about that. But I see Barb coming to the table. She'd probably correct me.
Well, he was correct. But Councilmember Moore, is, some of you may recall or may not, so that's why I'm down here. When we presented the treated water master plan and the water rate and fee study that we did at the end of last year, we talked about the need to do additional bonding. And it's either going to be a combination of treatment expansion and/or distribution system improvements. And so we will be making a decision at some point in this five-year period, whether we're going to bond for Windy Gap or for the treatment plant. And the balance of the cash then will be put in either or area.
Increase.
And that's why the debt service is going up, is its anticipation of a bond. But obviously, we have to go to the citizens and ask and get voter approval for that. So we have many steps. But that was presented in the financial plan when we talked about that with you last year.
I do remember that. I just was finally noticed the number. And this is also including, our water line replacement program is ongoing, it looks like, and that's funded from operating?
Correct, rates. Yes, yes.
Rates. And if people continue to use less water, what are we going to do?
That was taken into account with the financial plan. We did assume a certain percentage of each year of a reduction in use, and that was built into the rates that we adopted.
Thank you.
I want to also just clarify real quickly on MUW-172. Even though this is the most or the latest cost estimate, I can guarantee it'll change before we go to construction. You won't know the price of this project, finally, until you go to bid. You ultimately won't know how much you're paying for it until the thing's built. So these are our best estimates. We did want to get it reflected into both the CIP and to our cash flow, so that council's aware of that, though.
All right, any further questions? Councilmember Santos.
I have no further questions, Mayor. Just to the city attorney, can we just move the 9A? Well, I was going to bring Teresa down, maybe to just say thank you for putting the budget together. So thank you, Teresa, and everyone else that helped you with it, and the Budget Committee. And it takes a great deal of time. So I move 9A.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the other item pulled from the consent agenda is ordinance 2015-56. And Dale, are you making that presentation?
I am.
Okay.
I can see what I'm doing.
It's on the sale of the North and South Water Treatment Plant.
Up is north.
Yeah.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Rattamaker again. The item that we have before you tonight is a potential sale of the North and South Water Treatment Plant properties. The slide that I have up is one that was in your packet. It shows the North Treatment Plant at about 6.45 acres, and the South Plant at about 3.43 acres, less a little bit after the flood. And so just to go through a few of the highlights in the contract, I'd like to take a minute to do that. And before I do that, I want to acknowledge that Victoria Simonson is here from the Town of Lyons. And she doesn't want to make any comments tonight, but if you have questions, I'm sure that would be appropriate. And Larry Wayno with our staff is also here. He's been involved with this project from the beginning. So the property's been declared a surplus to the needs of the city. And that's a process that we go through to make sure that some other department may not need it, or some other municipal service may not need it. And so, given that it's located clear in the Town of Lyons, it's a little difficult to program it for other uses within the city. The property is within the Longmont Planning Area, and it is eligible for, ultimately, for annexation to Lyons. The agreement that we have before you is a direct agreement between the city of Longmont and the Town of Lyons. You may recall, over the last couple of years, we'd sent out an RFP with the hope of bringing in a developer that would work with the town, and that would also come to a terms with an agreement for the city. That has not come to fruition. And so the town is still interested in acquiring these properties. And so they are anticipating using a portion of their CDBG-DR funds. Right now, they're looking at funding from round three of the CDBG funds, when Kathy's gone. And so there could be a question with regards to whether or not the round three funding will be available by the end of the year. And that would be something, if it is not available, we would return to you to see if you would want to extend the contract time to allow for that to happen. The price is set at the appraised price. That was appraised back in 2011, and it was appraised at a little over 1.3 million. We have discounted the price, or we're recommending the price be discounted, in particular on the South Plant property, because about 14% of the property is really now the river, and little difficult to build, and would probably cost more than the value of the property to try to reclaim it for development. The Town of Lyons has acted on the framework of this agreement earlier this summer, and they approved it. And so it's in front of you tonight on first reading. We will have a second reading. Probably won't have another presentation. But, so if you have any questions, I'll take those. Otherwise, you can act on the issue.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to say it's been a long time coming to try to get these properties to Lyons. I see there's others, but I'll move ordinance 2015-56.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Councilmember Levison.
I'm just looking at the closing date. It just says 45 days. It just seems that we don't really think the DR money is going to come. Round three is not going to come. So should we amend the contract right now and set it for another time in the future? I guess, City Attorney May, what would you suggest?
Mayor and council, that's really a business decision for the council. I am not...
I mean, it just seems ridiculous for you to have to come back, you know, if it's not, if we know it's not going to be completed in 45 days, to, you know, maybe throw out something. And Sandy, I know you've been working a lot with the coordination. Do you have a suggestion or a feeling for it? Or, I'm sorry?
Yeah. So...
So Councilmember Levinson, I believe what we had in the contract, and I'm frantically trying to find it right now, was that the property would close on or before December 31st of...
Oh, okay. When I was looking at the, it says forty-five days. It's under, it's on page two of the contract, section five, as closing, it says within forty-five days.
Paragraph of receipt of...
Paragraph five, page two of the contract.
Read that entire thing. I think that's tied to...
Or it says, you know, as described, funds, receipt of funds described in 21.1 below, or another date to which the parties may agree.
Section 21, so I think that forty-five days is forty-five days from funding, as opposed to forty-five days from now.
Okay.
And I think it's section 21...
Twenty-one point one says...
Point one has the timeline of December 31st.
Okay. So I just was looking, you know, it said closing date, and so I just went to where it said closing.
So what I would recommend is, you know, we are, the good news is that we're doing round two and I think round three of the CDBG-DR funds through the local collaborative, meaning that we won't have as much delay working it directly with the state. And so, it could happen. But if it doesn't, again, what we would do is return and ask for your direction with regards to a possible extension. You know, you could pick a later date. What I can't do is stand here tonight and tell you what would be a good date. I'd rather see what happens with round three. If it does happen to come about quicker than we might think, great. If it doesn't, then we'd return back. And at that time, I think we'd have a better sense of, you know, should it be March 31st or April 30th, if you see what I mean.
Yeah. And, but if we don't, if we know it's not going to close before the 31st of December, so our last regular meeting in December, we'd have it as a topic to extend.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that. Thanks.
I had just a quick question. I'm real excited about this thing, because I know it's something I've been working with Julie, the old mayor, and...
John.
John, yeah. So it's, it's good to see this come to fruition. What is the, the operating sunk cost? I mean, it costs us money just to keep those things there. I mean, what do we spend, like every, like on an annual basis, just to maintain those properties?
Mayor Coombs, after we fully decommissioned them, probably three or four years ago, our annual costs dropped pretty dramatically, because we essentially have gutted the buildings of anything of value and disconnected power and those kinds of things. And so, we're really down now to just very basic lawn maintenance and those kinds of things. I think in the range of five to 10,000 a year. So we're not spending a lot of money on it, but I agree with you. It'd be good if we can make a sale. I think it's good for both Lyons and Longmont.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, that's pretty much what I was going to say. I just want to say, say thank you to everybody who worked on this, because I have sat in endless meetings over the course of my work life where people keep talking about win-win situations, and they almost never are. This one actually is definitely a win-win situation for us and for Longmont, I mean, for Lyons. And I think we're all happy about this, because it really does help out Lyons, and it also helps us out, too. So thank you again.
Thank you. I guess we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Seven to zero.
Your next item is board and commission appointments, and that would be me, so I will go to the podium. Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Valerie Skid, your city clerk. We have a couple of board and commission appointments tonight. These are leftover from our mid-year recruitment. We have the Longmont Housing Authority with one regular member term open and two applicants. You have some ballots in front of you. If you would take, vote for one, we would appreciate it.
You have a question?
Just one.
Which, housing?
Housing.
Yeah, can I ask you a quick question?
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Have, has one of the particular candidates termed out? Because I noticed in the application, Ann Care had been, mentioned she had been on since 2008. When did we get the term limit set in, or did they not apply to...
Well, she is not termed out. In fact, she was going to apply when we had it open before, but she didn't get her application in. So she's still, she's still eligible.
I just wanted to check, because she put that date in.
Levinson voted for Ann Care. Christensen voted for Elizabeth Osborne. Moore voted for Ann Care. Finley for Elizabeth Osborne. Bagley for Elizabeth Osborne. Santos for Ann Care. And Coombs for Ann Care. So she, Ann received four votes, and we'll get the regular appointment. And we have the museum advisory board.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Since there are two members, does anybody have a problem appointing both to the museum?
Nope, I think that would be great.
Councilmember Levinson?
Actually, I do, because if you look at what the, the situation will set up, the unexpired regular member term ends on the 30th of June. And if we don't appoint somebody now, and we decide to re-advertise and appoint them in December, they will essentially be on for five months. And so, I'm just thinking that maybe we should do one for the unexpired term and one for regular term, and then advertise to interview in December for another regular term.
Why wouldn't we want to appoint the two regular terms right now?
That's what I don't understand.
Yeah.
I guess we're voting.
Okay, let's...
Because I was kind of hoping to get consensus to just appoint the two applicants to the regular terms. So are we voting for the regular terms now, or are we voting for the one unexpired?
It's totally up to you as a council, so...
I think we should vote for, okay, we can just do it one step at a time. Let's vote for the one regular member.
Why don't we just appoint both to regular terms?
That's what we wanted to do, but...
Say what? Mayor?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we appoint Eve Lacy in, I'm going to slaughter this person, Incan, Incan and Purvis, to the two regular member terms ending June 30th, 2008.
Second.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, it's been seconded. All right, so we've got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote on that motion.
You'll have to raise your hands.
Okay.
Okay. And we are currently running ads to, and recruiting for your end of year, so we will put this one back on there, as well as Master Board of Appeals and Cable Trust, which we still have not gotten applications for. And we are working also, I want to let you know that the clerk's office is working with the multi, what is the Cultural Action Committee, Steering Committee, to look at how we can also add some diversity to our boards and how we might recruit some additional candidates. So, just so you know, we'll be trying some new things.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And Transportation Advisory Board met last night, and they have one board member that, one vacancy that they were concerned about. I know that Michelle sent an email out on September 25th encouraging council members and, and staff to, about some other boards, so I would also put a plug in for Transportation Advisory Board as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Does anybody from the public like to speak at this time? All right, I'll close the final call. Public invited to be heard. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Are there any council comments at this time? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I have two things I want to talk about. First, I want to welcome Bruce Partain to the Chamber of Commerce. That will be my business of the week, the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce. Bruce comes to us from Texas. We get a lot of good boys from Texas here in Longmont, and I would love to welcome him personally, and will do so at their business after hours. The second item I want to talk about is an ordinance to help us get more, more housing stock, more condos and more townhouses here in Longmont. Many other cities have adopt, not many, but, you know, handfuls of other cities have adopted ordinances to work around our construction defects law here in Colorado, most recently Aurora, and now Denver has taken it up as well. The new framework gives builders the right to repair defects before litigation. It also requires the majority of homeowners, and a homeowners' association would approve of any lawsuits, and that builders be allowed to offer monetary settlements to homeowners in lieu of repairs. And if they can't work it out, they need to go to mediation or arbitration before a lawsuit can be filed. I have a copy of the Aurora ordinance here, but I would move to direct staff to bring back an ordinance that would help us do the same as the other cities, in particular Aurora, as soon as possible, since we already have all these, all these things that have already, the work's already been done. Municipal League also has done a lot of work on this. You can use them as a resource as well. But I would move that we direct staff to bring back an ordinance to help us with our affordable housing here in Longmont by our next regular meeting.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay.
You want to release your mic? Because there's other people. Councilmember Levinson?
You know, I was going through some notes of previous council meetings recently, and I actually saw that we already talked to direct staff to start working on that.
Yes, but they haven't.
Like, like a while ago. And so, I don't know if you've made any progress, and, and I know there's a lot going on in the planning department right now. So can you give us an update on that? And I don't know, can you bring it back by the next regular session?
Go for it, Sean, and then I'll jump in.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Levinson, we have done quite a bit of work on it so far. We have collected all of the ordinances that have been passed so far, with the exception of Denver, which just announced that they are pursuing that, I believe. And we also have scheduled meetings with development groups, and so, we met with four developers, excuse me, three developers, who have either done condo projects or other residential projects here in Longmont, and got a detailed list of the things that do seem to be holding back progress in this area. We also have asked one of those developers to give us a detailed cost analysis of what the costs are for some of the overengineering and other design changes that they've been making to the products here in Longmont or in the region, so that we can kind of get a handle on what those, those costs are and bring that to you as part of the backup for adopting the ordinance. And so, we have done quite a bit of work on that, but we would, I think we're, we're getting close to being able to bring that ordinance back. What do you like to add?
Go ahead.
Mayor and council, Eugene May, City Attorney. I just addressed the timing. We do have workload already programmed. You know, to bring it back by the next regular session would be to drop everything, including participation in the Governor's Oil and Gas Task Force stakeholder meetings and, and other work that we're, got currently underway.
I guess I'm not in favor of dropping everything. I mean, it's, it's important, but it's not that important. I know the Metro's Mayor Caucus has been pushing for this for over the two years that I've been on it, pretty actively, and so, you know, I, I think it's, it's a good thing. You know, I've been on the other side of this thing as the owner of a condo in Las Vegas. So I know, you know, but sometimes the pendulum swings one way, and there's too much power, and I kind of agree, as long as there's mediation and we have the right tools in there that protect both parties in a fair way, I think it's a good thing. Councilmember Christensen?
I would not be in favor of this at all, unless it is simply about the ability of the builder to offer repair before being, before a lawsuit. And here's why. The reason we have this law in the first place is there were just scads of poorly-built condos and townhouses. And people had no recourse, and they lost a lot of their, their equity. Turning it into something that, in which people only have three years to sue, does not allow for anyone who has a, Colorado has, a lot of these townhomes and condos were built by out-of-state developers who didn't understand Colorado soil, which has a lot of bentonite in it. Some of those things don't show up for five, seven years. That's why we had such a long timeline on that. And I have friends who've had that problem. And when, the, the things that are featured in this are really totally, it seems to me, in favor of the construction industry and not in favor of homeowners. You have a three-year limit. You have monetary, money offered in lieu of repair. You have binding arbitrary mediation, and the developer is the one who hires the arbitrator. You have usually no appeal to that. You have no ability to have a class action suit. Mr. Sonning, Mr. Johnston, by the way, was a builder, and he said that none of these foundation problems would arise if people built things right. So this law arose because of a problem. We need to be thinking very, very carefully if we want to change it, and we need to not be creating something where we were going to shut people out and have them losing all their home equity.
Councilmember Levinson?
We've got a policy committee meeting at, at Colorado Municipal League on Friday, and, you know, if, if we don't have a discussion about this, I'll figure out whether or not they're going to have a discussion around what legislation is going to come about in the 2016 session, and I think this is probably going to be one of those things that gets renewed. So it would be, I mean, I'd hate for our staff to do a lot of brain damage right now when we might get a bill, and it'll be done in three months with a state bill that we can support, and we have supported.
You know, I'd like to say, too, that we, we're free as a city, home rule city, to draft our own. So if there's pieces and parts of different ones that we like, I mean, I kind of do agree somewhere, I mean, because, you know, my problem in Las Vegas didn't show up for seven years. So, you know, it's a different problem, different builder, but, you know, so I do agree with the timeline, but I think there are, you know, and I also agree with, with Sarah, if Colorado Municipal League has a good solution, too, we could, you know, use their brain damage to, to help us out. Councilmember Santos?
Looks like Harold is chomping at the bit.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to suggest to the, Councilmember Finley and Mayor Coombs, who made the second, does the 27th, Municipal League has their meeting, would that be sufficient enough time to bring this, at least for, for first reading to council? Or even a general, a general business item that we can go over?
So what I was going to suggest is that we have affordable housing on the next council agenda to talk about, and we can include that as part of the conversation and let council, we can discuss that in, in more detail with council, sort of taking that general discussion approach, and then we can go from there, if, if that's council's desire.
Would that be all right?
I had those conversations with staff last week in agenda meeting. So if that's council's desire, that's...
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I would withdraw my motion. However, I will remake it when we have that discussion. We have, we directed staff to look into this some time ago, and it never came back. And Councilmember Christensen, you always have the right to sue. That never, that can never be taken away from you. You always have the right to sue. I think that the, the main, the main things we need to make sure is that the, the builder's given the right to repair, that the homeowners' association has to have the majority of the homeowners agree if there's going to be a lawsuit, and that the builder's given the opportunity of making a monetary settlement, and there should be some arbitration and mediation. And of course, if no one, if the person, either side, doesn't agree with what comes out of that, there's always the right to sue. All you have to do is Google "Colorado construction defects" and watch the ads that pop up for attorneys to know that there's a problem, and we need to fix it. Not you, Councilmember Bagley, of course, not you, but many of your esteemed, not-so-esteemed colleagues. Really, all you have to do is, is do that. And, and we need to address it, and I'm happy to wait until we bring back affordable housing, but we need to get on it, or get left behind in the dust. We already have a problem without, you know, with affordable housing. Let's not let it continue.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I am in favor of looking at this issue in more detail. I had a discussion with Mike Foot at the last US 36 Committee Solutions meeting, and he's... His opinion, of course, can change. Things can change, that this isn't going to get through legislation this year.
It's not going to.
Will not. And that it's a big enough issue in my mind that we need to go ahead and address it. We can design our ordinance and maintain our construction standards. You know, we need to just make sure that things are built well. And there were a number of years things were built where things really didn't go bad. In my neighborhood, for example, there's lots of condos that were built prior to 2001, 2000... 2001. So I think it could be done. We can get quality builders in Longmont. We can anticipate, because we've had the problem, we can anticipate the issues we're going to face. We can write into the ordinance, and we can end up with a solid solution.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I was kind of hoping not to debate construction's defects legislation. So I... Harold, from what you've told us, we can assume or pretty much bank on this will be on next week's agenda.
That is one of the items that you gave us in terms of affordable housing, and so we will make sure that that's included in that conversation.
That's all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson?
I guess I had one other question about the topic. Would it affect any of our ordinances or standards for the building code in Longmont? That would be the other piece of information that I... You know, I'm assuming... I know the way we do building checks, we don't check every single property. We do a selection of them. So I want to make sure that we're not liable if there is a defect, too, with the way we do our code inspections.
And Councilmember Levinson, we can make sure that that's part of that work in the discussion next week. I also wanted to mention that Joni and her staff have pulled all the permit data for about the last 10 years with regard to townhomes and condos, and have really looked at how the legislation affected that, and so we'll have that for you, too. So we have been doing quite a bit of data collection from the development community as well as from our own permit data.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. So there definitely is a nexus between legislation and the amount of building that's being done. Councilmember Levinson?
We're still in council comments, right?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everybody who didn't stay for the entertainment part of the Day of the Dead opening last Friday night, that, like, you missed a really rockin' show. There was a local band, Barrio A, and then a band from East LA called Las Cafeteras, and they were visually interesting, and they were extremely interesting to listen to. They even did Johnny Cash, Ring of Fire, in a very impressive way, and then also a great American folk standard, "This Land Is My Land," and with a very different twist on lyrics, and it was a great show, and I really think that the way the auditorium is being utilized, it seems like there's something going on, any of those, you know, prime nights for entertainment. So I think we've made a great investment, and everybody who contributed to that really helped out the community. I also want to call attention to a couple of things. There's a meeting all day on Thursday. That's the Boulder County Resiliency... It's not the Resiliency Competition. It's another all-day meeting with Boulder County on... Can you clarify that? Because I'm not getting the detail on the...
I think it may be the state sending out the invitation, and it's related to the National Disaster Resiliency Competition.
And it starts, like, at 8:30 in the morning and goes till 3:30 in the afternoon.
Then there's a public hearing at 5:00, from 5:00 until 7:00, and that's at the service center or the utility...
Right.
...center.
Training room.
Training room, and it's actually behind the main building where Public Works and Natural Resources...
So basically, there'll be a very large trail of breadcrumb showing people how to get there.
Absolutely.
Cool. And then also, the Latino Chamber of Commerce is having their annual business expo, and again, that's an all-day Thursday thing, kind of a cafeteria of things to do all day on Thursday. And then, well, Friday, there's going to be... I'll be down at Colorado Municipal League for the policy meeting and hopefully report out on Tuesday.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to thank Bob Allen. We received his email regarding water usage complaints in northwest Longmont. I had talked to three residents prior and got in touch with Bob. He was able to address those with those residents and the many other lists of names that were sent to me. So just want a nice thank you to Bob about that and all the hard work he put into that, and in fact, telling residents to give him a call personally so he can look into it. The last thing is, I'll apologize to council for egging on the youth council. Hopefully, we will get crushed.
You should discourage them. You're a worshipper.
Actually, well, I did before the meeting. I actually told them we were going to beat them, so the pressure's on us. So I look forward to keeping that trophy one more year.
Speaking of trophies and competition, the Longmont Trojans are playing Windsor. They're both the one and two ranked 4A teams in the state. They're both 5-0, and it's going to be this Thursday night at 7:00. And Longmont's got this kid that can kick 70-yard field goals. I mean, he's got an NFL pro leg, so hopefully, the community will come out and support this great matchup. So I guess that's it. City manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor and council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
I did not say one word tonight.